Okay, I'd like to open the Planning Commission meeting for the town of Gilbert, November 4th. Can I get a roll call?
Chairman Joshua Ailer.
Here.
Vice Chairman Christopher Sippel. Commissioner David Blazer. Commissioner Carl Bloomfeld.
Here.
Commissioner David Cavaney.
Here.
Commissioner Brent Moody. Commissioner Jennifer Whitman, here. Commissioner Brett Young.
Here.
Can I get a approval of the agenda? A motion? Approval of the agenda?
Chairman, I move that we approve the agenda with the following changes noted. That we move items eight and nine, I think it's eight and nine, right?
Correct.
To the consent public hearing portion of the agenda, under item number six.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Whitman, and a second from Commissioner Bloomfield. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes five zero. Yes, we're, yeah, we're just moving to consent to continue. Okay, that brings us, item number six, communications from citizens. At this time, members of the public may comment on matters not on the agenda. The commission's response is limited to responding to criticisms, asking staff to review the matter commented upon, or asking the matter to be put on a future agenda. Is there anybody I'd like to speak under these circumstances? As seen done, we'll move forward. That brings us to our public hearing and the consent agenda. Consent public hearings, our items do be heard at one time or one public hearing. After consent public hearing, these items may be approved by a single motion, at the request of a member of commission or staff. An item may be removed from consent calendar and may be heard and acted upon separately. Other items on the agenda may be added to the consent public hearing and approved under a single motion. Our consent agenda is items number eight, GP 14-01, and item number nine, which is Z14-01, and both are being requested to, for continuance to the December 2nd hearing. Do you want to have a motion on the consent agenda?
Chairman, I move that we approve the consent agenda as written.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion for approval of the consent agenda from Commissioner Whitman, and a second from Commissioner Bloomfield. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes five zero. That brings us to our non-consent public hearing. Non-consent public hearing items will be heard at an individual public hearing, and will be acted upon by the commission by a separate motion. During the public hearings, anyone wishing to comment in support or opposition to the to a public hearing item may do so. If you wish to comment on a public hearing item, you must fill out a public comment card indicating the number of item you wish to be heard upon. Once the hearing is closed, there'll be no future public comment unless requested by a member of the commission. So the comment cards are, these yellow, sometimes they're green, and they're on the back table. So if you have any, if you wish to speak, go ahead and fill out a card and bring it to our staff here at the roundtable. Our first item on the non-consent public hearing is item number 10, which is GP 15-08, Somerset Phase Two and the accompanying case, Z15-16, which is a request to rezone.
Thank you, Commissioner Ailer, commission members. Bob Caravona, Senior Planner. You last heard these, this case, GP 1508 and ZN 1516, at the last study session. At that time, we studied the request to change the general plan, a minor general plan amendment of 9.5 acres of the subject site, from residential one to two dwelling units per acre to residential five to eight units, dwelling units per acre. We also studied at that time the changing of the zone districts from SF 35 to S, Single Family Attached, SFA. Since that meeting, there's been conversations with the developer, with staff, and they were very good conversations. They listened to the commissioners' comments at the study session regarding the densities, and really examined their plans for this property, and is it possible, you know, to reach the five to eight, but what do they really need to achieve their goals? And they presented an illustrative plan that was roughly around 3.57 dwelling units per acre, and that's what they intended to develop. So looking at that dwelling unit request, they are submitting to, a request to reduce that to a residential of 3.5 dwelling units, residential to 3.5 to five dwelling units per acre. And that's consistent with their, their plans for development, which is a single-family attached and detached units. But before we go into that, upon the screen is the existing site. And just to give you some bearings, this is the Higley Manor to the east. There's also a cell phone tower in the back southeast corner. There is a drainage easement along the front property. There are overhead lines along Pecos, and then also down along the property. Also adjacent to this is this roughly, I believe, is 180-foot buffer between the subdivision. That's an open space tract that provides buffering from the adjacent subdivision to this property. I don't know if you can see off in the distance, but the temple is located in this area. I did receive one public comment, phone call this last week, concern from a resident from the adjacent subdivision about the views towards the temple and westward. He had moved in this subdivision with the anticipation of having some open views, but understands there may be some development, but would like to try to preserve these views as much as possible with lower density. This provides an aerial context of the subject site, and then also just from the surrounding properties, once again, you've seen this in the, in the study session, Discovery Park to the west, the LDS temple, SRP, that's directly adjacent to it. It's a utility site for, for the utilities, storage and maintenance of those facilities. And then Higley Manor and White Wing at Higley to the east. As you may recall, there was the approved Somerset preliminary plat a few months ago. And just to point out, the, these are single-family lots, SF 6, 7, and 8. There's a point of connections through the subdivision to the adjacent subdivisions. And it's always been envisioned that there would be a connectivity from Pecos, I'm sorry, there's also a main connectivity point from Pecos into Somerset. But there's also envisioned that this connectivity would come through the existing approved SFA zone property west, southwest of the subject site, which would lead and connect in through here, and then also provide connection to Pecos. This is a, the overall plan is integrated, so when I say integrated, that they're, they're looking for the connections to this plat, to this subdivision, and also to the north. But they're also going to be providing the same type of amenities that are found in this, in the Somerset subdivision within their proposed development. The subject property is currently, as, as mentioned, it's currently R 5 to 8. And then looking at the general plan, we have a more intensive uses to the west that gradually decrease intensity as you move away from this commercial area. And the proposed property is the first instance on the southern side of Pecos that residential would be introduced. And so when you think about development intensities, you would decrease as you move eastward. You'll see that the adjacent property has a general plan designation of two to 3.5 units per acre. That density came in at roughly 3.1 with their existing development. And just as a reminder, you recently heard this Phase One back in January, where was that, I'm sorry, I think it was January, yeah, 2012, where this was approved from a similar general plan designation of, to R 5 to 8, and then also changed the SF 1 to a SFA, Single Family Attached. So the request is in line, which was, which had been previously approved. But as I mentioned, the developer is submitting that he's going to reduce that density request to 3.5 to five units per acre, and that is shown upon the plan for Phase Two. The developer also wanted the commission to be aware that they will be willing to bring in the preliminary plat for both properties, so you can review and approve that. And then they'll also, at the same time, the preliminary plat, submit for the GP amendment to lower this dwelling units from five to eight to, similar to 3.5 to five. Just so you can see a comparison for the subject property, what is the maximum dwelling units that they could achieve? There is a reduction on the low end from 47.5 to 33.25, and then a reduction from in the high-end range of 76 to 47.5. The applicant submitted a email stating his request, and then also the reasons behind the request. Once again, stating the site constraints of a cell tower, overhead wires, the drainage easement along the front, the substation to the west, so it's really not an ideal property lending itself to large acreage subdivisions. Also, that the request is appropriate in terms that land use transitions of decreased density from south, which is a Somerset, which is at one to two dwelling units per acre, and as you move closer to Pecos, you increase in density. So he's acknowledging that, that, that makes sense. And then also, as you move from east to west, that, that transition also incurs to a higher density. In terms of single-family zoning, the single-family attached zone district allows attached and detached units. This is the only zone district that allow, for which the developer is asking, and is also represented in this illustrative plan. So staff is in favor of that request. And just for your edification, what is the development standards associated with a single-family attached? You would have a minimum of 2,000 square foot lot, a height of three stories or 36 feet, and then the setbacks associated with that, and then the maximum coverage. So you're really looking towards like a patio home, townhome type unit, when you see that smaller type lot coverage. Once again, there is, there was a neighborhood meeting shown. The neighborhood was in attendance. There was a discussion of the 150-foot open space buffer. Again, there is the discussion about block views from the subdivision, which is Higley Manor, across the open space buffer, and then towards the temple, which is down in this location. And just to provide the illustrative plan, this plan was provided to the neighborhood meeting. This is the most likely proposed development. There's, there probably will be some changes as they fit and study this area more closely as to what is the appropriate product to be developed on this, on this site. They have explained that they have not come to a product type as of yet. And just for an overview of the request, once again, it's a reduction in dwelling units, and then also to single-family attached. And staff recommends approval, stipulated by the applicant to do the, for the reduction to 3.5 to five units per acre, and the rezoning to SFA. Along with the condition that Pecos Road, Half Street runoff is retained per the language within the recorded drainage easements for this property as executed with a previous owner and provided by the Altus Survey Schedule B documents. Questions?
Thank you, Bob. Do we have any questions for your staff at this time? Commissioner Whitman?
I have a quick question. I know the applicant, thank you very much for sending the email earlier today, but I unfortunately didn't have time to really delve into it. So I, I think the gist of it is, is that they're proposing to reduce the overall GPA request from what it was originally requesting of five to eight to three and a half to five, is that correct? Okay. With that in mind, do, does staff have proposed revised stipulations that, that mirror that change? Because I think right now, the general plan stipulation at least is for five to eight. And obviously, maybe the zoning doesn't need to be amended, but, or would we just state that if we recommended approval, it would be based on that density category for the general plan amendment?
Chairman Ailer and Commissioners, yes, you are correct. Commissioner Whitman, you would make the motion and reflect the change.
Okay. And then my second question relates to the existing parcel. I think I heard in your presentation that the applicant stated that they would come back and also down, I want to say downzone, but downgrade the general plan classification as well, if the, if this proposal were approved? Is that correct?
Commissioner Whitman, yes, that's my understanding. The developer is available to confirm that understanding.
All right. And this wasn't a gated community, correct? It was open in all respects?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff at this time?
So just to confirm, which parcels in the Somerset piece are, are currently not yet approved? The subject parcel, obviously, anything else not yet been through planning and approved?
Just, just the subject.
Just that one?
I'm sorry, Commissioner Cavaney, this, this does have entitled zoning for SFA and the GP 5 to 8.
The upper left, or no, the other colored, okay. And then the little piece just upper left of it, right adjacent to the temple site, is that approved already?
Commissioner Cavaney, no, it's not. That's just illustrative drawing.
Okay.
It is commercial considered. It's probably going to be much different than what's shown.
Got it. Okay. Great, thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Bob. Is the applicant here at this time? Come up to the podium?
We appreciate staff's presentation, and just a couple of clarifications. Nathan Anderson, representing the applicant, residing in Gilbert. So the, the parcel there that you just referenced with, just north, and north of Phase One, it is zoned commercial. So ultimately, we anticipate that that will be some kind of commercial. I think it's, is it community commercial? I think it's community commercial, that's the zoning category. Also, we do anticipate that, that the, the subject site and the Phase One will be gated. We do anticipate that it will be gated, when it comes back in for the preliminary plat. And maybe just a brief, just a very brief history on this site. It was acquired after a lot of the zoning work had been done. So it was, it was actually acquired after the, after the general plan amendment and rezoning occurred on the, on the Phase One. And at the time, we, we knew we needed SFA to accomplish the product that, that we ultimately envisioned on Phase One. We didn't exactly know what the density was going to be. And so in working with staff and in looking at the general plan, five to eight was a, was consistent with SFA. And, and so we, we went ahead and moved forward with five to eight. As we've refined our, our land use plan, it's become more apparent that, that we really don't need five to eight. We applied for it, however, just to be consistent with the Phase One, so that we were developing both under the same set of criteria and standards. But in, but we did listen to the comments that the commission made in the study session. And we've listened to, and have worked with staff, and feel comfortable now that we can, we can downgrade effectively to three and a half to five on Phase Two. And then when we come in for a preliminary plat on Phase One and Phase Two, file a concurrent general, minor general plan amendment on Phase One, to also three and a half to five. So that, that's a little bit of a history of where we've, where we've come from and how we've gotten to this point. I would also like to add that we, we have a vision for this, for this site. We feel like that there is a, a need to provide slightly higher-density, single-family housing in close proximity to the, to the temple, and, and even within the master plan, the Somerset master plan, somewhat of a diversity of housing product. Most of the Somerset master plan to the south of these two phases are larger lot. I think the, the smallest lots are, in the preliminary plat are like 95 by 150s, or something like that. And so they're, they're fairly large, and they're, and they, and so we felt like it was important for us to try and provide that experience, that living experience, for those that don't want to live in a, on a large lot, but that want to live in a quality, high-end living environment, in close proximity to the temple and other amenities that are in the area. And so with this background, we, and we appreciate staff's, the discussion concerning the appropriateness of the land use, we feel like in every way, that three and a half to five is consistent from a land use perspective, with respect to land use transitions and appropriate buffering, and some of the site constraints, SRP substation, and the arterial roadway, and cell tower, and all of those kinds of things. And we, so we appreciate staff's work with us on this, and would encourage your support as we move forward. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Whitman?
Nathan Anderson, question for you related to the product. Have you developed the product yet? Have you designed it yet?
No.
Okay.
We haven't developed it, we haven't designed it, and we haven't developed it yet.
Okay. Because my question was related to the zoning district and the height that's permitted. I think it's permitted up to three stories in this category, and with concerns with the adjacent neighbor about site views. Just wanted to see if you had plans yet, and if those plans included three-story units or not.
The plans currently don't include three-story units.
Okay.
We wouldn't anticipate three-story units on the site.
You wouldn't?
We would not.
Okay. Would, with that in mind, would you be comfortable with the restriction to limit it to two stories? Or? If it's not something that you're planning, but?
Yeah, I think.
Commissioner Whitman, they are requesting a conventional zoning. This is not a.
Understood. It's not a PAD, understood?
Yeah, I think we would be comfortable with that stipulation. Commissioner Whitman?
Counselor Steph saying that.
Chairman Ailer and Commissioners, thank you, Ms. Whitman, for being so detailed in your thoughts. However, this is conventional zoning, and conditions of approval such as this are appropriate for a PAD. So unless it went through a PAD, it truly is conventional. We didn't advertise it as a PAD, and the public that was informed through the public hearing process was notified that it was a conventional zoning. So.
Right, but we're being more restrictive, not less restrictive, is that? I, I think we've added stipulations such as these to zoning cases, straight zoning, not just PADs, when deemed appropriate for the request?
I don't remember a case. And we have been consistent in conventional zoning, truly being conventional zoning, so that we would be able to look at our code as it exists at the time a permit comes through, with no restrictions. So in order to add this type of restriction, we would have to re-notify as a PAD.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Do you have any questions? Okay. Oh, okay. No, not at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
We do have a comment card. Does not say if it's in favor or opposed, but it's Bob Meldrum. If you'd come up and state your name and city of residence, town or residence.
Hi, Commissioners, my name is Bob Meldrum. I live at 2853 East Derringer Way in the Higley Manor area. And I want to, first off, thank you, everything that you're doing, okay? I think you're doing a great job. And we've only lived here two months, so in the Higley Manor area. My concern, as people and as government entities, is that we sometimes make decisions with unintended consequences. I'm glad to hear that the density has been reduced, and I'm glad to hear that we're maybe thinking about limiting it to two stories rather than three, because one of the unintended consequences is, on this plan, is if you, you can have the density the way it is, but if you have multiple families living on top of each other. multiple families living on top of each other, if you have two and three-story condominium townhomes, then you've increased the density of people and traffic in and out of this area. We moved from Lone Tree, Colorado, a beautiful community that had great zoning at first, but then they changed the zoning, which allowed multiple townhomes and condominiums and apartments. Just changed the whole landscape of the community. I mean, a very tight community, meaning that very difficult to walk, transact business, to drive through the area. That was an unintended consequence. If you talked to the Commissioners today, they would say they wish they never did that. So I just ask that you consider that in this decision. I'm not trying to throw water on anybody's parade here, because obviously, this has to be developed. I know that regardless of the views. I mean, that's fine, but I just want to be respectful of the unintended consequences on the density. The other thing that's unintended is the access into this parcel coming off of Pecos. We try to access and make a left-hand turn going westbound from Higley Manor. Sometimes during the day, it's almost impossible to make that left-hand turn because of the traffic. People do not respect the 45 mile an hour speed limit, I can tell you for sure. And sometimes, you know, many people have even been almost hit from behind in trying to make that turn. So there's other issues to discuss with that. But the point is, with the additional people, and if you do the two-story or three-story with multiple families on the same unit, then you have more people, more traffic. You're going to have a problem there. You'll either have to consider a light at either that entrance point or at the Higley Manor entrance point. And then the other thing is, you may want to consider is the utility poles. I know no one's talked about that, but the unsightly utility poles on that property. Maybe time to kind of bury those if you're going to put all this housing in there. So again, with that, I just want you to consider those things for the unintended consequences part of it and in support of a development and progress. Obviously, it's got to happen, but just to consider those, we greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Sure. I just wanted to point out too, though, I think your comment was related to multifamily, people living in the same building. And I think that this particular request is single-family, so you will have one unit with one family, I say family lightly, but owned by one ownership.
So there wouldn't be two, like a...
It's not townhomes or it's not apartments. It would be a three-story home is the height limit. But I just wanted to, it's just single-family, though, not multifamily.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks. Does the applicant have anything else to add? Okay. Bob, do you have anything else to add? Do we have any questions for staff or comments to make before we bring it back to the dais? Okay. Well, let's bring it, close the... And bring it back to the dais for discussion. So any comments to throw out there on this before?
Can I take some?
Commissioner Bloomfield?
Oh, I'm sorry. You were recognized, Dave. Being familiar with the project and the property, it's a tired piece of land, and it's been well-used and, dare we say, well-loved. But I'm grateful. This is a good blend, and being able to expand, just expand the land and take this into this very nice and upscale development that we were pleased to approve the final, the pre-plat on not very long ago. I think it's a great benefit to the community to be able to do that. I'm glad that the comments that we made last month in study session were listened to. And being able to, really without changing the plan, but just changing the general plan designation was a good thing. But overall, I think it's a good fit. I understand the attraction for this kind of a housing product, because I've lived in by the Mesa Temple, and this kind of a housing product would be beneficial there as well. So I see the benefit to it as well. So all in all, I'm in favor and like it, so.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Cavaney?
Well, my initial feelings during study session, as we're in the minutes, is that this was such a stark downsizing or downzoning that it worried me. But I appreciate the adjustments that have been made. I do think they help, and I think as I've studied it more and I see how it integrates into the Somerset parcels, I see a better blend and a better fit, rather than trying to compare it to Higley Manor or what's north of Pecos. So and as I look at it from a, I mean, I have an opportunity to hear zoning variances as well, right, in another role I play. And I had to look at this as a property with a few hardships with this SRP station, with cell tower, with some of the frontage issues that were just expressed by the gentleman who spoke. I definitely agree that it has a fair amount of hardship, and I think the other thing that speaks to me is I know this developer, I know him to be of high quality and in great integrity, and I'm sure they'll do a great job with this, so I can endorse this.
Commissioner Whitman?
I got to say that I was happy to see the revised request forced today. I think that that density better plays and fits in with the area than what was previously proposed on this parcel. Well, I don't like necessarily spot zoning for future uses when we don't have a particular player in at the time to plan around. I mean, what we're seeing is a best guess of how this might work and how it might be designed. But I do think that this particular owner, landowner, has done a stellar job in the town and has really upheld their integrity here and have tried to abide by every request that we've ever made. So I can see and I trust that they will work with the developer, who will instill a good design and development on these two parcels. And initially, I was actually surprised to see that little middle piece. I don't remember approving that as part of the original zoning case, and I don't know that it would necessarily be approved today. But since it's kind of an island in and of itself in the middle of this development, and it is surrounded by the other uses, and you've also requested to downgrade the general plan request, I can support that request. And my comments related to the height obviously still remain, but I don't think it's certainly not comments related to, or in response to neighborhood comments. I can see the temple from the freeway. I mean, you're still going to see the temple. You may not see it as well as you'd like to see it or thought you would be able to see it, but you're still going to, you're not going to be able to miss it. So it's certainly not a temple visibility issue. It's more of an interplay between the existing land uses and surrounding land uses. And if we could get something in that is two stories or limited to two stories, I think that would be a better fit for the area. But if we can't stipulate to that, I'll just leave the comments with my Jennifer Whitman's personal opinion on that, but you do with it what you may. So with that, I would be in support.
I see it as a continuation of the two pieces, so I don't have a problem with the density. I do, the height is the major problem that I would have had or would have, but since we can't do anything about a change or a stipulation, I would just have the developer, when the layout, be conscientious of the property to the south when you have the southern border of this property, because those will be towards other residential, the rest of it. And this idea of a plan has barriers with roads, and I like how it has some green space and there's some separation. So overall, I'd be in favor of this plan. So do I have a motion?
Chairman, I can give a motion. I can open up my computer again. Here we go. Recommended the Town Council approval of GP 1508 Somerset Phase Two to change the land use classification of approximately 9.5 acres of real property generally located at the east of the southeast corner of Pecos from Residential One to Two to Residential Three to Five, three and a half to Five? Is that the request?
Yes.
3.5 to Five.
3.5 to Five.
Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Whitman, a second from Commissioner Cavaney. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes 5-0. So that brings us...
We've got to do the zoning case now.
Oh, yeah, that's right. There's two cases with this one. Do I have a motion on the zoning case?
Chairman, I can give that. For the reasons set forth in the staff report, move to recommend approval to the Town Council for Z 1516 Somerset Phase Two as requested, subject to the conditions, but there's only one, I think, listed in the staff report.
Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Whitman, a second from Commissioner Cavaney. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes 5-0. So now that brings us to administrative items. Item number 12 is the Planning Commission to consider approval of the 2016 calendar regular meeting. Is everybody all right with it, now that we have a choice?
Do we have to approve it formally?
Yeah.
Move to approve, Chairman?
What?
Do we have to formally?
Yeah, we have to. It says act on motion.
Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Whitman, a second from Commissioner Cavaney. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Approved 5 to 0. Have the meeting minutes for approval for the study session, a regular meeting of October 15, 2015?
Chairman, I move to approve those minutes as included in the packet.
Okay.
Is the meeting October 7th or the 15th?
Yeah, it would be the 7th. I think that was just wrong in the...
A typo.
Yeah, that's right. So I have a motion from Commissioner Bloomfield?
Second.
A second from Commissioner Whitman. All in favor?
Aye.
And I sustain, since I wasn't here. So passes 4-0. Brings us to communications. A report from Chairman or members of the Planning Commission on any current events. Have any thing to add or share today? Okay. Report from our council liaison.
Commissioners, I'll step in for her and combine her thoughts with mine. She directed us to the Town Council, oh, not the Town Council, I have Town Council on the mind, our town website, which has a wonderful calendar, wonderful things to do in Gilbert. It's always packed with those types of events. I'm just going to mention a couple. The most important right now is the Gilbert Census. And it's just a real encouragement for you to share with your neighbors who might not know, certainly residents that you are friends with, that it is so important to be counted. This is the five-year special census, and it's an opportunity for us as residents to get the share back to Gilbert with state and federal funds based on our population. So if you happen to miss the person knocking on your door, they will leave a note and you can call. It only takes about 10 minutes to be counted, so please encourage your neighbors and friends. We are having a wonderful Veterans Day ceremony here tomorrow at the Town Hall. It begins at 11:00 a.m. It also includes a free lunch. So it's an opportunity for us to thank those who have served. Tomorrow night, in downtown Gilbert, at St. Xavier campus, we will be entertained by Comeback Buddy. It's a 50s-type music, and it's going to be on the campus of St. Xavier. It's a free concert, is one of the series that the town is offering. I personally will be there at the census booth, so I'm going to enjoy that also. On Saturday, if you've seen some of the information about the Color Explosion Dash 5K, it is Saturday. It begins at 8:30 at Freestone Park, and this event is to support the Down Syndrome of Arizona charity. In November, there's several events at the Riparian for stargazing, a night owl walk, a dino dig and bird walk. There's always great events at our Riparian at Greenfield in Guadalupe, and most of the events are free or very, very minor or a very minor fee. Most importantly, for those who do celebrate Thanksgiving, please enjoy the time with your family and friends. And for me personally, I continue to thank you for your experience on the commission. We really depend on your input and your area of expertise to make Gilbert what it is, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Linda. Well, that's also a report from Planning Service Manager. So that brings us to adjourn the meeting, adjourn the hearing.
November 21st. It's on my calendar. So forgive me.